Good evening and welcome to the October 15th, 2013 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. I want to ask everyone to silence your cellphone. That way we don't get interrupted. I'll do that to mine as well. The first item on the agenda is to proclaim Tuesday, October 22nd, 2013 as Lights On After School. And do we have someone to speak to that this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Colby Wilson, Director for the Boys and Girls Club. Good to be here tonight. I want to thank the Commission for recognizing the impact the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence has on the community. Each year, in conjunction with the After School Alliance, we celebrate Lights On to not only highlight the importance of our after-school program, but to showcase Boys and Girls Club members and their talents. This year's Lights On Talent Show will be held next Tuesday, October 22nd, at 6:30 PM in Haskell University's auditorium. And if you don't remember anything else, remember this. Due in large part to support from the City of Lawrence, every single day, 1,400 youth walk through the doors of one of our Boys and Girls Club sites here in Lawrence. Per capita, it's one of the largest Boys and Girls Clubs in the nation. Our services are essential to working families in Lawrence. We provide their children with quality programs at affordable prices, giving them peace of mind while they are working. Their children are being guided in academics, good character, and healthy lifestyles. So I think Mr. Mayor's going to read a proclamation here in a second, but again, Lights On celebrates the importance of after-school programming across the country. It's a nationwide event. Today, we have members from the Boys and Girls Club sites of Sunflower, Woodlawn, Kennedy, Broken Arrow, and Deerfield to present light bulbs to our city commissioners. So would you all stand up, please? Our young members from the Boys and Girls Clubs can go ahead and present the light bulbs?
So we each get one, huh? Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. A note, too?
Mine's from the Deerfield Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, sir. This is one of my favorite times when we get the light bulbs. I've got this is my 70th year now. It's a very exciting time.
Does your club rock, though, because my club?
No, no, mine's clearly just the plain Jane version, but I was excited when they went from the regular light bulbs to the compact fluorescent. I'm wondering when you're going to move on to the LED lighting.
Next year.
Technology is advancing.
After seven years, we need to...
I'm going to be old by the time you do that.
New technology.
Anyway.
All right. Well, thank you again for helping us.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize you and the work, kids, the program. This is a great sign of public support and a great cooperation for our kids and the community. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for you.
All right, thank you.
Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth and is grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School, a national celebration of after-school programs on October 22nd promotes the critical importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, their families, and their communities. And whereas more than 28 million children in the United States have parents who work outside the home and 14.3 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they're being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. Now therefore, I'm Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 22nd, 2013 as Lights On After School. And would you like to come get this?
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for showing up. We really appreciate the light bulbs and you guys reminding us how important these programs are. So the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and all matters listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered under one motion and enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that a member of the Commission would like removed from the Consent Agenda? 4B and 6H?
6H, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Is there an item that a member of the public would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, so then we're back to the Commission. Is, I guess we're going to add claims to vendors of $4,899,490.42. Is there a motion with the exceptions of item 4B and 6H?
Move.
Second.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda minus items 4B and 6H by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Farmer absent this evening. Okay, item 4B, Mike.
Mayor, I had a visit with the City Manager earlier about questions that I had with the roofing material and making sure that the comparisons there. I'd had conversations with Diane several weeks ago about two companies that basically we use Garland and Firestone, making sure that the materials are comparable because I think that, as I heard, as an optional bid on the roofing, there was considerable savings. And I just want to make sure that we can look at the comparison between those two materials and make sure that if the opportunity to save money is there, I think that we should look at that. Dave did explain to me, and I guess I'll let him explain that, about the phasing of the project.
You're being asked this evening to approve the first two phases, the work that we want to immediately accomplish this fall for $12,500 and then work next year for $100,000. That's all in the parapet wall area. Future phases will include some additional wall work and then, as the Vice Mayor has talked about, the roofwork. And I think would be appropriate that you go ahead and authorize this with the understanding that when we get to the roofwork, we're going to seek to enlarge the specifications and the opportunity for different materials to be bid, or at least quoted, and then you all will then decide how to proceed in that regard when we get to that point. We simply just don't have the funding. At this point, I can't recommend that we try and find the funding for this large of a project at this time. We'll get the work done that needs to be done and then do additional work as we have resources in the future.
The report that was in the staff memo tonight did explain that DGM, who was the consultant on this project, I guess wasn't hired to do an evaluation of the roofing. So, you know, we're kind of going on our own on that. But I just want to make sure, I guess, that there's questions about tensile strength in, you know, those materials and one's three layers and one's one layer. And I don't know enough, but if the tensile strength's the same and the cost savings is quite a bit different, I think that our evaluation of that ought to be taken, you know, pretty serious on, you know, what kind of application we're going to use and make sure that anybody can bid that who is using similar material that can be bid.
Right. Okay, so...
So your action this evening would be to...
Approve the parapet wall.
Approve the parapet wall work at 112-500 for Phases 1 and 2. And then what we'll do is we will then come back to you for additional authorization.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Mike, I agree. When you have equal materials, one's proprietary and one's just a means and methods kind of thing. You want the same quality. You just want to make sure we're...
As long as it's the same, yeah, we should not have, you know, the one bidder who can only bid if that's the case.
Right. Fair enough.
I appreciate looking at that.
And that's parapet wall work. It looks like it'll help significantly in reducing the moisture intrusion.
That's... You're correct.
Yeah. Okay, so want to go ahead and approve item 4B? Is there a motion?
So I would move that we approve item 4B, Phases 1 and 2.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve item 4B, Phase 1 and 2 by Commissioner Reardon, second by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Farmer absent. And then item 6H, Mike.
Just a question, voting on it.
Sure. So is there a motion to approve ordinance number 8862?
Second.
Motion approved or moved by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Farmer absent and Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, a few items in this week's report to highlight. We did obtain copies of the sole development proposal that the state received in regard to a possible Clinton Lake Resort development. You have that there for your reading. The state indicated that they declined to proceed with this proposal because of the request for state financial backing. I have met with Robin Jensen, the Secretary of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism. We've talked about the process to date, and I think we are exploring some additional areas to educate ourselves on, perhaps looking at utility studies in the area that might further refine possible development opportunities there. So we're going to explore that a little bit. If there's any agenda items that would come out of that, any contracts and such, you all would see those before we would proceed. But we do want to see if there's some opportunities out there. We had a good conversation about the work to date, and we'll see if there's some additional opportunities in the future. Got a report from Scott's Department in regards to September building permits. Again, continued good activity in the community. Also have our September sales tax distribution that reflects the mid-July to mid-August sales in the community. A good increase there that offsets a little bit of some of the decline in previous months. We're roughly on budget for 2013, which is good. Better would be if we were receiving receipts above budget, obviously. Megan and others have worked to put together the Lawrence in Focus. Really appreciate the work from our interns that have, I think, really putting out a really quality product and would commend that to your viewing. And as I'm talking to a number of different community groups, I'm also encouraging them to take a look at that as well. Then finally, our Park and Rec Department was recently recognized by the Governor and others at the state for receiving a Health Champion Award. So good state recognition from all the work that our Park and Recreation Departments involved in. Happy to respond to any questions you have.
Any questions for Dave? Good news. And yes, the production online is excellent. Those interns need to be commended for their hard work and quality dissemination of information.
They have sat through enough City Commission meetings that they're experts in many things now.
Yes, clearly. Okay, just we're on to the regular agenda items this evening. And just a note that public comment on each of these regular agenda items limited to four minutes. At 3 minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear this sound, and that will be your indication to try and wrap up. First item on the regular agenda is receive a request to amend administrative policy, AP 79. Jonathan?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Douglas, City Clerk and Assistant to the City Manager. Parking in front and side yards of residences is generally prohibited by the city code. The City Commissioner or the City Manager can approve exemptions to that section of the code. This exemption historically has been used to allow football game day parking in certain areas of the city adjacent to the football stadium, more or less, historically within the green circle on this map. A few additional exemptions have been granted in recent years, the most recent in 2009 at 746 Mississippi. And I'll say more about that one particularly later, but you see two exemptions. We recently received a request for another exemption, which is at 808 Main Street, which is in this yellow highlighted box right there. And that's a closer view of that same property for the new request. We've received some correspondence regarding this request from a neighbor, from the property owner, and from the Neighborhood Association. The neighbor and the property owner were supportive of the request. The Old West Lawrence Neighborhood Association opposed the request. We've received feedback from the Police Department, not about this particular request, but just in general, that they do have a lot of questions about this policy on game days when they're out working the street and parking is at a premium in some of these neighborhoods. And that is how this request came to us today, after they spoke with the tenant at this property. So what we're asking today is that you are requesting your direction regarding whether you'd like us to amend the administrative policy to exempt 808 from that prohibition and allow, in effect, game day parking at that location. It was brought to our attention after posting the agenda that 746 Mississippi, which is the last exemption that was approved, has actually been developed since that time, and there's now a nice new home on that lot. So we could probably remove that from the policy if you'd like. With that, I'll stand for questions. And I know, I'm pretty sure the resident was here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions as well. Please.
So other than 1649 Edgehill, everything else is in the green square?
Yes, except for 746 Mississippi, which we should probably remove.
Which is de facto complete.
Anyway, yes.
Okay, and then what goes on over at 1649 Edgehill?
Steve, yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Had a request from the property owner to be in the Oriet neighborhood. You may have had some of those communications over the years from Mr. Watts and his desire to be considered part of the Oriet neighborhood. So the decision was not so much to change what the neighborhood thought about their neighborhood boundaries, but to allow him to be treated as if he was in the Oriet neighborhood for his purpose. There's not a lot of parking on his property. I wouldn't think there'd be any, but maybe there is. It was my... But we've gone ahead and included that in the adopted policy.
Okay. Any other questions for Jonathan?
Help me to understand. 1649 Edgehill Road can have parking during game days?
That's correct.
If, yeah, that's correct. Parking in the yard, parking in the yard is prohibited citywide. It's not viewed as, I mean, it's still a bit of background. I wrote those ordnance, I don't know, 20 years ago. And it was not desired for the safety of drivers and other cars that are about as far as where we were, where we would enter the road. It seemed to be desirable to enter the road at driveways and streets as opposed to going over curbs. It also was concerns about some of the aesthetics of having vehicles parked in yards. As you immediately pointed out, that an exception needed to be created for the Oriet neighborhood because it had been a strong tradition and really a relief for all of the parking needs on football game days to have that. We have just, within the past week or so, sent reminders to all of the property owners in the Schwagler and Centennial neighborhood that the city code prohibits parking in the yard for, because that is sometimes a concern on basketball game days where parking is occurring in the yard. And that neighborhood has not made that request. The City Commission has not approved an exemption to the ordinance there, and we enforce it. But the Edgehill Road, it was a request from that property owner similar to the one on Mississippi that no longer makes sense. And then we've got another request.
So he's really not interested in parking. He just wants to be a member of the Oriet Neighborhood Association.
I would let him speak for himself, but I would think that he wants that. He probably, he may want to have, I don't know, it's not that far. I suppose you could park there, hike up Louisiana, and be there near the Chancellor's house, and then on over to the stadium. So there might be some parking there. That would be a very busy football game day, I would think, to have a lot of parking demand on that side of campus, one like we haven't seen quite yet. I'll defer to other experts in that area.
Right. Bob, were you Commissioner in 1992?
Yes.
Was... So you were part of the Commission that approved the Oriet? So the only reason that we granted this particular...
There's age limits on this.
Yeah, that's right. Oriet was just because it was tradition, right? That's it.
Well, I think, Vice Mayor, it was tradition, but it's also a recognition of the fact that the university doesn't provide enough parking for all of the visitors that are coming to campus, that it's very convenient to park in some of the neighborhood immediately there north of Fambro Drive. And I see a lot of it. I think we all do. And so that was just recognition that that was being allowed, but that citywide, as a general statement, we didn't want parking in the yard for safety purposes and community development purposes.
Okay, so the dividing line on the north was just established as that being that, that's where it's going to be?
Yeah, it was 9th Street, yeah.
That was it.
That... I'm trying to recall all of the conversation that went into that, but I think there was a recognition in the Oriet neighborhood that this was occurring and that other neighborhoods really didn't want it. We've had a complaint in the West Hills area there, west of West Campus Road, of, from a property owner that said another property owner was allowing parking on the, in the yard. I think it was Stratford. It may have been University Drive, but it was one of those streets. I referred that to the Police Department, and the Police Department will make note of that as they're busy on football game days, that we don't allow parking in the yard.
But if somebody then has an alleyway in Old West Lawrence or other parts of the city, and they have access to their backyard, they can park in back, just not in the sides of the front, correct?
As the, as the yard is defined there, that is correct. And clearly, one of the places that people could allow additional parking is in the driveway, as long as it's not blocking the sidewalk. And there's some, there's some driveways there that are somewhat lengthy. You can probably get involved in that as well.
Okay. Make sure I understand the rules.
I like to park in the new parking garage on Terry Street. Take a little bit of a walk.
I could make some money.
You can make money.
Park everybody that goes to the game area.
Okay. So I think that's all the questions we have for you this evening. Thank you. Till later. Is there any public comment on this item?
The applicant. Hi. Good evening. My name is Colin Mahoney. I live at 808 Main. And we found out on Saturday, October 5th, quite by accident, when a police car stopped and put its lights on and informed us that this was illegal for us to be doing. And so we have looked into it, and that's why we're here tonight. And what I wanted to say is that, first of all, I'm not really sure about the arbitrary line. I do understand from this conversation that it has to do with neighborhoods choosing or not choosing the parking, but I can tell you from having lived in the Old West Lawrence area just north of that green line for seven out of the last 10 years, that parking is rampant in that area. And I can't really imagine what's going to happen if it's suddenly completely illegal because there are a lot of cars that are going to have to have somewhere to go. Not necessarily relevant to my real commentary, which is that that particular property, 808 Main, the lot that's next door to us, I think would be considered 810 Main. It's a completely vacant lot, and it is completely accessible from the alley. There's no sidewalks to go over. There's nothing to, they're not blocking any utilities. So we could park cars, and we do park cars on that lawn, without interfering with anything. And getting on and off that property can be done completely by the alley. So we feel like it's almost an ideal spot to park cars on a Saturday, not on the sidewalks, not going over curbs, not interfering with neighbors, not dealing with utilities or anything like that, and not creating a safety problem if there are emergency vehicles or anything else that have to get to our property or the neighbors. The neighbor directly next to us at 812, fully in support of it. Our landlord, when we moved in, said, "This will be great. You guys can do parking on Saturdays." The woman who owns the house across the alley from us rode in and said, "We fully support this." We've never had anything but a congenial neighborhood atmosphere there, and all of our neighbors all do parking. So we feel like we should be given an opportunity to continue to do this because we think it's all right. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, Kirk McClure, Old West Lawrence Association. As I indicated in the letter, we, the organization met and is opposed to granting yard parking. Those of you who've been around for a long time know that Old West Lawrence has struggled to pull itself back from a deteriorating neighborhood. We are constantly struggling with trying to find the kinds of families who will invest in their homes, who will raise their kids there so we can continue to populate our nearby Pinckney School. I might point out that we see it as a victory, that 746 Mississippi, the last lot that was permitted in this use, has now been fully developed by a family with children. It's very hard to attract such investor residents. The parking situation on game days and on weekend events, as we just went through with the Mother Earth News event, those are always troublesome, and they're a nuisance. They discourage people from moving to our neighborhoods. We certainly don't want to discourage them any further. This simply would exacerbate a nuisance that already exists, taking a step in the wrong direction. I hope you'll take a step in the right direction and prohibit parking from this particular area. Thank you.
Question, please. Question?
Kirk, how many people park, or you may not know the exact answer, but do a lot of people park off the alleys and park multiple cars on game days in your neighborhood?
In my neighborhood? To my knowledge, it's only done by friends. In other words, I have a couple of buddies who, but I have improved parking spaces. Nobody parks in the yard.
Okay, so as I'm, from our prior conversation, it sounds like per this regulation, it's okay to do that off the alleys, if I'm understanding that correctly, even if it's not improved?
It can be on grass or it can be on...
The backyard.
The backyard.
Is that right? Because it says front and side.
It would be a violation of this work.
Right.
It might, if it's a continuing parking, which of course, we've only got, what, seven, eight home football games, if it's a continuing use of that backyard, then it might be a violation of the zoning ordinance over time where...
Okay, well, here, let me just...
So I don't want to overcomplicate it.
Let me just cut to the specific question. I'm looking at the yellow perimeter photo. It's not up right now. But it looks like there's probably room for, I can't tell exactly what's on the south side there, if it's some kind of wall or whatever, but it looks like there's room for, if you double stack those cars for, eight or 10 cars in there off the alley. But I really can't tell what is on the south end of that property there, if it's a, some kind of structure while I'm looking down at it. But if, the question here is, so that would be permissible on a short-term basis under this regulation? And is that something that your organization could support as well, just the parking in the back of the house?
No. If you've seen the site, this is not, this is a yard, and you're going to trash the yard by doing this. It's impossible to police the way people drive. As the staff report to you pointed out, people drive over the brick sidewalk and over the curb to get out of there. We work hard to maintain the brick streets and to maintain the brick walkways. You know this is not supposed to have a car driving over it. Yes, the cars can drive out the alleyway, but they'll take the path of least resistance. That's the kind of trashing of the neighborhood that discourages future investment. future investment.
So, charging for parking at the properties, kind of where you draw the line, as opposed to being friends or doing your, somebody a favor, you're saying parking, charging for parking and parking anywhere other than on a paved surface is...
That's correct. I have not polled the membership, the organization, on that particular issue. I know my east end of Old West Lawrence best. The only parking is on improved spaces and, yeah, there's an arrangement. You know, I've got a couple of friends who they know and I get out of their way and I'm not a football fan. They are.
Understood. Do the same, yes. Okay, thank you. Any more public comment?
Let me ask Mr. Mahoney a question.
Sure. Mr. Mahoney, would you come up to the microphone, please?
So, how many, how many cars can you park at the back of your lot there that...
Just on the alley side?
Yes. Not going beyond, not going beyond the back wall of your house?
Probably 12. But, yeah, yeah, 12, I would say. Well, the comment I wanted to make was about what this gentleman said, which is that I think it's a gross generalization to suggest that every resident of Old West Lawrence who chooses to sell parking on game day is not concerned about the Old West Lawrence environment somehow deteriorating the neighborhood or trashing their property, which were the words that he used. We, we take great pride in our house and we have a beautiful yard with a small garden in it and we're not interested in trashing it. This is not a tailgating situation where we have people drinking and barbecuing on the lawn. This is a situation where we park cars, they go to the game, they come back and they leave. And as I said, it can be done through the alley. We can make sure it doesn't get done driving over the brick sidewalks. So, I also, the neighbor directly behind us owns her property, takes great pride in her property and parks, has in the past parked many cars in that backyard. It's the one directly to the right of the yellow box. The neighbor directly next to us at 812 loves the parking thing. He's got a fantastic property, investing in the neighborhood and not interested in causing trouble or trashing the neighborhood. Last thing I have to say is that my kids go to Pinckney. We're a family. It's a family situation. We're, we love the Pinckney area and we want to keep it nice, but we don't think that parking a few cars on a Saturday is really gonna destroy a neighborhood. Thanks.
Is that, is there a building back there on the southeast corner of the property? Is it gone now?
Uh, that's been torn down.
So, that aerial photo is...
Current.
The most current?
Yeah.
Okay, so, there was a barn or a garage or something? A shed?
There was a garage there and that's actually interesting because as far as I understand it, an approved surface would be a driveway or a gravelled parking area. So, if there had been a garage there, then technically that should have been approved parking because, right. So, and as far as I know, everything in the back of our property would be an approved surface. So, what we're really asking for is the ability to put a few more on the grassy area directly west of that.
To the, into your side yard. Right, got it.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Fred?
I just want to clarify one thing. My understanding is if you put some type of chat or some type of gravel down, that is not an improved parking area. It has to be concrete.
Correct. I try to, that's, is a hard surface asphalt or concrete?
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mayor, the only, the only question that we have is whether or not, you know, I, under the ordinance that we have right now, it basically says, or the code says, that, you know, you can have parking in the backyard. It denies it in the front and the side yard. Question is whether or not we're gonna change or allow an exemption to the code to allow parking in the side yard. I think if we're gonna take the other one back, you know, this gentleman, you know, obviously has the right to put cars behind the house under our code. He said, what'd you say, 12 cars back there?
Yeah, it looks like maybe 12.
I think that's probably enough on that lot and as long as he takes, makes sure that the property or that the cars are not going out to Main Street and going across that sidewalk or the curb there, as I know, we don't want to repair any more sidewalk and curb, but I wouldn't feel comfortable in going ahead and extending that on the south side of the house there.
Okay, so, side, backyard, alley access, paved, paved-ish surfaces, anywhere along the side, the backyard, adjacent to the alley, no further than the depth of the house. You can't go past the house line.
Can't go east of the back wall.
Yeah. Is that what you're thinking too?
Yes.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, I, I agree with some of the comments Professor McClure made about, you know, degradation. I think you guys may have the best intentions and we appreciate that. There's other people that rent property or own property that, that want to make, make a decent profit off of the space that they have, but just judging by the photographs, it's, it's clear to me that people, whether you allow them or not, have been driving across the sidewalk and that's, that's, that's where I draw the line for me, because it does ruin public infrastructure curbing and then, of course, the sidewalk, which is your responsibility, but ultimately is the public right of way. So, I'm, I think I'm gonna go with what the other commissioners are saying and I think I would be in favor of letting them park along that, where the, from the, where the garage used to be north to where the paved surface it ends and then to the alley. I don't know how many cars that is, but I wouldn't, I don't know how you draw the line, but that's kind of hard to say in a motion.
Well, just to clarify, your house faces the west, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, we don't want to go to the west of the east wall of that house, right?
Right, no side yard, no front yard, only the backyard, and only that part, which it looks to be is almost, was all paved anyway with either gravel or former foundation of the garage.
It looks like there's about 10 feet on the south, that's a grass area and probably another 10 or 15 feet on the north. The rest of it, it looks like it has some kind of strip.
Okay, so, Dave, how do we even make a motion for that?
What you could do is you could make a motion to have the administrative policy amended to delete the reference to the 746 Mississippi Street location and then at 808 Main, allow for parking in the area to the east of the existing residential structure to the alley.
Ingress, egress only from the alley.
Right, with egress.
What happens if people don't listen to the current occupant?
Put it back on the agenda.
Well, it'd be, it'd be a violation, I guess, of this policy.
I know, but when it's, okay, parks them too deep, then someone just pulls right out, crosses the grass and goes out the front yard and boom, we're back to the same problem again.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we, I guess they could cite the owner or they could cite the driver for a violation of the ordinance.
Could, could we require some type of temporary device, like a rope and a fence?
Well, I mean, you've, you've got complete authority here to allow this, so if you wanted to establish certain conditions, you could do that. I mean, you're kind of moving toward almost sight planning of the property, which is not really our, our intent. The, the value of this ordinance was is that it allowed police officers in their normal patrol to go ahead and issue citations for this code violation, as opposed to trying to enforce the zoning violation, which is, you know, usually kind of a Monday through Friday enforcement regime. So, I, I guess I'd encourage you to, I mean, you could say that you allow, allow the parking in the east part of the property, east of the, of the structure to the alley, with directions to provide some level of barricade or signage to not allow people to drive through the, the front part of the yard.
Yeah, and if they're willing to do that, then, you know, I think the other commissioners seem like they'd be in favor of that, so, I guess we need to get the buy-in from the current occupant that that would be done, otherwise, I guess we would deny this. Because we, we don't want them driving across the yard. We don't want them driving across the sidewalk. We don't want them driving over the curb, right?
Correct.
So, does this just run concurrent with this occupant of the house?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm just looking at some older pictures here. It looks like that whole area was paved at one time, some surface, so, only three or four years ago, so, that's basically a big driveway. I don't think we're changing things much. I don't know about making it only for this person. I don't know if we can do that.
Well, we could change it back if, if things aren't going right.
Correct.
We Tuesday night, we just bring, put on the agenda.
Appropriate to talk to property owner.
Bob, the only reason I bring it up. Do you own the house, sir?
I do not.
Are we making this to run concurrent with the property owner or the property itself, or with just this applicant?
And you have approval from the landowner, Jonathan?
We got a letter saying that it was okay.
Just, just the letter, that's all you had, first?
Yes, just the letter.
Okay. All right, well, then I would say, let's just leave it with by the address and then we'll, we have the right to amend it. So, is there a motion for that?
To allow it in the backyard.
Backyard only? No, well, area adjacent to the alley, east of the house.
Subject to all the items explained by the city manager and mayor and other commissioners.
Yeah, because that'll see a backyard.
There's a motion?
Yeah.
Second?
Motion by Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Farmer absent this evening. All right. Item number two is to consider authorizing city manager to sign a purchase order for a supplemental agreement with Land Plan Engineering.
So, Project Six in Iowa keeps coming up over and over and over. We are ready to go to bid. Plans are pretty much prepared. The primary objective of the project was to get this westbound to southbound, westbound Sixth Street to southbound Iowa lane in. If you'll remember, we started out, we thought we could squeeze it in. We looked at what would make the intersection more effective, providing the eastbound to southbound right turn lane, widened it a little bit more, putting sidewalks on both the north side and the south side, widened it a little more. And we ended up to where we had to go ahead and actually extend the concrete boxes or tunnels on McDonald Drive. At that point, we had to step back, do a little bit of redesign, got with KDOT. Land Plan is our engineering firm that we've hired to take a look at this whole thing. Basically, the slope of this grade here, you know, it falls off pretty steep. The problem was that we, as we widened the street just a little bit and a little bit, it got too steep. It almost got vertical and we couldn't hold that slope. So, then we had to extend the boxes. The proposal right now, we've got all the lanes of traffic in and right now, the proposal is to put a six-foot sidewalk on the north side. We are connecting the sidewalk that we put in a year ago along Iowa and we headed it back to the east. And if you're following my pointer, I'm kind of walking this through here. But we are going to go ahead and continue that on the south side of the road, all the way west to Rock Ledge. There is gonna be a crosswalk across Iowa on the south side as well. There is a crossing, there's a five-foot sidewalk to the east of this project. It crosses the ramp that heads north onto McDonald Drive if you're going westbound. We have handicap ramps, we have a sign. It doesn't have the pavement markings, but we also have a light for, for the evening or the darkness. It has been requested that we take a look at widening the six-foot sidewalk on the north side. If we're gonna do it, the time is now because we were only extending the boxes enough to get the six-foot sidewalk in. So, if we want to extend it to 10 foot, we're gonna have to extend it a little bit more. Land Plan did some preliminary numbers, estimated that it would cost about $100,000 to widen the, from four foot to, from six foot to 10 foot, so widen it four foot, extend both of these tunnels out and other four feet each, plus all the fill that's required on the back slope. So, in addition to that would be basically the engineering cost at $10,000. The estimated construction cost still will probably come in under what we are possibly getting back from KDOT through our Highway 40 Turnback Agreement, which we're in the final throes of finalizing with KDOT at this point. And that should be coming to the commission here in a few weeks. What we would propose is if, if the commission approves this, we would go ahead, talk with Land Plan. We'll get the plans revised by December 1st, get them back ready to bid. We would bid them probably February-ish in that timeframe and then we'd start construction early in the spring on the box extensions and then the roadwork would be after school lets out. So, I can answer the questions if you have questions.
Questions?
Detour. When the boxes are closed, and, and one thing that, the boxes are gonna have to be closed at some point. KDOT's gonna close them at some point because they've got some maintenance to do. Couple of years ago, some of the ceiling in the tunnels fell. So, they've got some work to do. So, they're gonna be closing these at some point. The detour will be Rock Ledge. Basically, if you're coming up, if you're going northbound on Iowa, you'll go westbound and go down the Rock Ledge. And if you're coming in from the turnpike, you'll have to go back up Rock Ledge as well, so that both of these tunnels can be closed. We're trying to coordinate KDOT's maintenance with our project so that it's only closed one time for both projects.
I think you covered this, but I want to make sure. Is there a crosswalk then on the south part of Iowa Street?
There will be. There is a map.
It's just not marked on this map yet.
It's not marked on that map, yes.
Okay, but there is, then there is a crosswalk on the east side of the intersection from the south to the north.
Yes.
That's good, because I don't think there's anything there now, is there?
There's nothing there now, no.
You have to run fast.
Yeah, the signals aren't set up that way either. The signals here will include the pedestrian signals. There's no pedestrian signal up there right now.
And then, how wi, how wide is the sidewalk on the south? Is that a four foot?
On the south side will be six foot.
Six foot.
All the way, all the way across.
That's on the west side and that'll match up to the east side then?
Any other questions for Chuck? Yes, Blake?
Chuck, several months ago, you and I had discussion about the ramp going to McDonald Drive on the north side of the road. What would you propose? And, yeah, I, I like the idea of the additional width of the sidewalk. That's fine, but Mayor, as you and I talked yesterday with staff about the encouragement of using, you know, additional sidewalk and all, we're gonna put pressure on, on that ramp at that point. What safety precautions are you gonna take? Because we had, like I say, improvements, lighting and other things that you've done.
It is, it is a free flow, right? So, people are just driving right, right through and they've got to watch for pedestrians. And right now, we've got a sign and we put in a overhead light. If it gets to the point to where we think is a safety concern, we may need to put up a flashing beacon. I'd hate to even suggest, you know, at some point, it may need one of those hybrid beacons.
What's the sign say?
It's just the pedestrian and the crosswalk.
Oh, okay. Not, not alerting a driver necessarily, just marking that this is an existing crosswalk and you need to provide right of way?
Right. No, it doesn't say, I mean, it's just their standard, here's the crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, I would say that we could do more to mark it without putting up lights and hawk signals.
I can, I can have David Woosie look at it a little bit and make some recommendations.
Okay. I think that that would be good because, you know, you don't want to err at this point because, you know, the speed of the traffic and, you know, right now, the, the traffic slows a little bit through there just because you can't turn, but...
When we get the turn lane in, the two westbound lanes will be free flowing. I mean, as far as, when it's green, so the traffic will continue on and you won't have that backup.
Well, now, yeah, so now it's gonna go quick. But anyway, you know, the truth of the matter is, is you're gonna get pedestrians and, and, you know, away from that traffic, you know, for... that traffic, you know, further away from the traffic, which is going to be helpful, but here again, as we encourage more pedestrian traffic on the north side of that roadway, we do have to consider that on ramp, and like I say, you know, there, there's points of time during the day, you know, people going to, you know, the industrial sites, you know, going to work and stuff, yeah, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there, so.
Yeah.
If there are other suggestions that we need to consider, I'd like to see some.
Well, we probably need to look at that other ramp coming, you know, if we're going south on McDonald Drive and looping up this one here, because people tend to get here and they're looking, looking back to the west, and if somebody was walking across or running across this direction, you know, so, and we have like, at Sixth Street, Dylan's on Sixth, West Sixth, in the sidewalk, we've put signs, you know, as people are riding or walking or something and they're looking down, there's signs, you know, to look both ways as a pedestrian, so people have to be alert that way as well.
Yeah, it's just a messy spot, it's just a, you know, right angle, cross, it's just, we got to figure something, I'm sure there's, somebody's done something interesting from pavement marking standpoint or from a sign at standpoint, because that, I was just looking at the Google Street View and the pedestrian signs covered up by a tree limb, you can't really even see it in this picture, I'm sure it's not that way now, but.
We will check.
Uh, yeah.
Make sure.
Just saying. So, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, that's what Mike and I, we just want to, if we're going to encourage people to use it, which we want to, and it might actually allow them to move quicker, then we want to make sure that there's not a choke point here where we're going to have confluence of two different types of transportation modes that are going to drive people to not use it, because if we're going to spend an extra hundred and some thousand dollars, it'd be nice to make sure people can use it safely.
So your action tonight would be, if you're interested, to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order with Land Plan so we can get this redesigned?
Got it. Thank you, Chuck. Public comment on this item?
Hi Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Tim Herndon, urban planner, landscape architect, I practice independently here in Lawrence, and as a cyclist myself and the father of a couple of kids who cycle, and as a resident of West Lawrence who frequently enjoys the amenities and opportunities that East Lawrence has to offer us, one of the things that my family and many families like mine are imminently aware of is the lack of a good connection between east and west across town, and in the presence of such a connection, I know my kids and I, or without my kids, I would ride my bike downtown a lot, it's just not possible, so I would just implore you to continue over time to seek ways to fund projects like this, to seek ways to incrementally as best we can, continue to improve that east-west connection so that people that aren't in cars or aren't on a bus can find a safer and more enjoyable way back and forth, and I just want to thank you for even looking at this, looking backwards just a few days into these almost complete plans to make this change before it's too late, and with that, I take any questions, and I want to apologize in advance for rushing right out to PT conferences, so, thanks for your consideration in this manner.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Which one's better, the city commission or the parent teacher conferences?
Definitely the city commission.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tess Spanion, I live at 505 Rock Ledge Road, a street you were just talking about, I'm a member of the pedestrian coalition, however, I'm not here tonight speaking on their behalf, I'm just a citizen talking to you, I support the shared use pathway, any effort to make our streets safer is a good thing, and truthfully, right now, it's shared, it's shared by everybody, I walk down, I walk a lot, I walk four miles a day, and so I'm on these city streets, and what I have noticed going down Sixth Street is that at any given day, and not all the time, not every time I'm on it, but many times, I will be coming down Sixth Street, because I live on Rock Ledge, I walk up, and I do destination walking, which is if I can walk there, I go there by my feet, so, I go down that area right there that you're talking about, and you're talking about increasing that, that would be a great thing, because if you meet a cyclist, which many times you do, because I wouldn't want to be on a bicycle on Sixth Street, they get on the sidewalk with you, and truthfully, there is that part where if you were to kind of misjudge, you might just fall down into McDonald driveway, seriously, or you might fall into the traffic, so I take care of myself, if I see a bicycle coming, I get as far away from the traffic as possible, but it's not very wide, so the fact that you're considering doing this is a great thing, and I applaud you for looking at ways that we can make our city really, really pedestrian friendly, now, in terms of Rock Ledge Road, I had a nice experience, and I want to share that, with somebody in the city, I think his name is Matt Teal, is that a name?
Mark Teal?
Okay, he called me because I was crossing Rock Ledge, and I stood and watched seven, not Rock Ledge, but Sixth Street right there, after I had my morning walk, seven cars turned while I was in the pedestrian walk, and I had the right of way, seven cars, so I called the city, they put up a sign, I am very thankful, but if you're talking about deterring people, then I hope you give very careful consideration to that intersection, because I know people don't get up in the morning and say, how can I plow somebody down at Sixth and Rock Ledge Road, they don't get up planning to do that, the problem is they come zipping up Rock Ledge and they see a green light, and for them, they know they don't have much time, they got to get through it, now, I'm very careful, and I look around me, but there are a lot of students, not, no, that's not fair, not lots of students, but there are students going to the junior high not far away, and they are not as careful as I am as an old woman, so they're not looking around, they're not as careful, and I'm really concerned just learning tonight, that we're going to be diverting a lot of traffic into that intersection, so I think if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, and how long those cars had to get across, because last time when I stood there and seven cars went in front of me, by the time they stopped coming, and I was three or four feet into the intersection, I had a choice, do I dash across and try to make it in five seconds, and the, and the white hand's gone now, it's red, or do I retreat and start all over again, I don't think kids will be doing that, so, anyway, so if you would think about that for the future, I would appreciate it, and also want to thank you for thinking about this and showing that sort of initiative, really appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Bryan, I work, or live at 401 Sharon Court, and I work at the Health Department, I have a few comments, but before, I wanted to acknowledge the three of you that came to the LivWell celebrations tonight, thanks for doing that, I know Jerry Farmer was going to be there, but he has tonsillitis, so, thank you all for your support of LivWell, and to my comments, the Healthy Built Environment Work Group, which is one of the committees of LivWell, drafted a letter this, today and sent it out, I didn't see it on the correspondence to the agenda, but I figured you guys got it anyway.
Hard copy.
Mike assured me you guys got it, anyway, I just wanted to speak to that, I know Mike Meyer has been working really hard, especially with Commissioner Shum, to think about how we can build a better pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure for the city, and he had, I think, believe has all the support of the work group members that are listed on the letterhead, and similar to the previous testimony, it's commendable that you are, I think, proactively sort of looking at this opportunity and looking at how we can create a better, more complete street network, so, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Chris Tilden, I live at 1121 Williamsburg Court, so I'm out on the west side of town, I work at the Health Department, so, live further down, closer to downtown, I think just about everything I wanted to say content wise, you know, has, has been said at this point, you know, it was ironic, a couple of years ago when I moved, I moved to a much larger community, it was the first time in my life I actually then did commute by bicycle to work, because I had a non-conflicted shared use path that was ninety-five percent of my ten mile commute into downtown Boise, Idaho, so I'm glad to be back, I'm not commuting by bike nearly as much as I did, this would be an ideal situation for that, it is an awfully narrow spot at present, and a ten foot shared path would be fantastic, I'd just like to echo what Charlie said with the development of the pedestrian coalition, the multimodal studies, work being done by the MPO, the creation of the Healthy Built Environment Work Group, there just seems to be an awful lot of momentum, an awful lot of folks who are supporting the work and decisions you all are making to create a healthier built environment that makes it a safer and a more conducive place for us to walk, cycle, so, appreciate all you're doing on our behalf, thanks.
True, thanks, Chris. Additional public comment? Okay. Well, Bob.
If I might.
You may.
Since I was kind of the instigator of us checking this thing out, this is kind of an interesting roundabout way we got here, because I told a couple of these gentlemen tonight, somebody said, well, we got in just in time, I said, no we didn't, we resurrected it from the dead, because it was supposed to have been built this summer, and we, we didn't get to it because the drawings didn't get done, and then we said, well, we'll just do it next year, and all of a sudden, I was working with Mike Myers on the extension of the Burrows Creek Trail to the north and west, and I started looking at this, I thought, you know, my, my goal in all this is to see if we can't find connecting links between the Burrows Trail on the east and K-ten at Sixth Street on the west, because right now, if you start out west at, at approximately K-ten and, I don't know the county road number that, but out by Rock Talk Park, you can ride all the way around to Iowa Street, when K-ten is completed, the bike trail goes with it, so it goes to the east, we've got Burrows Trail that gets us to about Twenty-Ninth Street, I believe, so Twenty-Ninth Street further south is not that big a section to connect to, and then if we get Burrows Trail over around to Pinney, we don't have very far to go to make a whole loop, when, and the reason why I started looking at this is Iowa Street is only going to become more busy in, in the future because of the connections it makes, the north and south and east and west, we're building an intersection here probably for the next fifty years, and I thought, you know, that's going to be a hard road to get across to complete this, this trail someday, and I thought, you know, now's the time just to, to build that, it really doesn't do much, it is an incremental link, but it's at least something to aim to with this, with where we are at Pinney, to get up to here and then get across and maybe go over to the north and west around to eventually tie into that trail at Sixth and K-ten, so I think this is a extraordinary opportunity for us to, to put into effect our policies that we all agree to, and it doesn't cost much more money, in fact, maybe the whole project comes in yet below the allotment that we have set aside, but it's really important, if we do it in the future, if we don't do it now, we do it something else in the future, you're either going to go under Iowa Street or over Iowa Street, or you're going to have some mega contraption of, of signal lights that's going to slow traffic and it's going to be equally as expensive, so, you know, there's not, it's just a, a great moment to put this in place with the idea that someday we're going to be able to cycle around the whole city, and then once we cycle around the whole city, we'll be able to interconnect parts and really give us ourselves a functional network of, of opportunity, I would say right now, we have a good recreational trail system, but in terms of going somewhere, they're segmented, they just, they just really don't connect too well, and any of us who have ridden on a protected bike path like Chris was saying, it's, it's so much faster, easier and safer, and it's really enjoyable as opposed to having to navigate busy streets in a fairly narrow lane, even though it is a bike lane, so, wherever we can get this in, that, I think it works well for the future for us, so that's, that's how it all kind of came together just at, at the moment.
Appreciate that. Well.
Oh Mayor, that, that's good, I just want to comment on, thank Commissioner Shum for bringing this item up, I guess I'm getting old enough now, I remember when the sidewalk on the north side of Sixth Street was just kind of a wreck.
Yeah.
You just kind of walked along, it was just kind of a muddy little rut, so, I, you know, because of, you know, traffic getting faster, more and more traffic, you know, on the roadway, and, and now bringing pedestrian traffic as, as, you know, a major movement through, through town, I, I think it's important that anytime that we can upgrade the, the safety part of this, I think is extremely important, that's why, you know, the discussion that we had yesterday, and that on ramp is so important and recognized and have the motor in public recognize that, you know, that there may be, you know, some type of potential conflict with either cyclists or pedestrian traffic, you know, just, so as long as we take care of that, also, the loop that comes around there, comes under Sixth Street and comes around from the west there, you know, there's another site, you know, that we're really going to have to mark well, just so that people, you know, drivers and pedestrians and cyclists alike are going to be able to see, because that, that will be another point of conflict, but, no, I appreciate you bringing it up, Bob.
I can remember in Kansas City when they put in I-35, and they put in a tunnel that went nowhere for ten years, but they saved millions of dollars because they thought ahead, and with an old house, many times we'll do two and three projects and it'll bring something up where you can save money, and you can have a much better project if you think ahead and create a path or do something that you can do two things at once, and I, I think we say very often that we're a biking community and we're friendly to biking, in some ways we are, in some ways we're not, because they're, they're not interconnected and they're not for transportation, they're really just for recreation, I think this is a great idea, it'll be there for a while, not interconnecting, and when we do interconnect it, we can make it safe for the public as they go along, so, I would be very much in favor of this, because I think it says in a very specific way that we value what we say and when we talk about the fact that we want to encourage people to be active, to be healthier, and to do it in a safe way, and this is where the rubber meets the road, so I think we ought to go ahead and do this.
Agreed, Bob, thanks for allowing us to talk about it and.
Every bike we put on the trail in a transportation mode is one less car we have on the road, so.
That's right.
Quite a trade off there.
Now we just need to get people to share the road a little better, that's, that's the one thing I think we can work on in this community.
Would you allow me to make a motion here?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to move that we authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order for supplemental agreement with Land Plan Engineering for professional services, and to begin to plan for a ten foot wide shared use pathway across Iowa Street at Sixth.
Oh wait, can I just ask one question before we second that, since there was a delay in the creation of these plans which yielded this problem, is there any way we can get a deal on this ten thousand dollar fee since, since we, we were delayed by our engineers' plans in the past? No?
No.
You sure?
This is additional work.
Okay, just, just, just asking.
Well, and the, it's a complicated, it's a complicated project.
I know.
We're squeezing a lot.
I just had to squeeze it just for a second, because it, although it was a good thing, people have been wondering why we haven't done it and now want to say that.
It's good, and then I, I'm glad we're trying to coordinate the detour, I mean, the last thing we'd want to do is close that tunnel.
Yes.
For our project and then close it again for KDOT.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Shum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reardon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes four zero, appreciate the work, and Land Plan, let's get her done. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting Resolution 7047, which is issuance of bonds in the amount of four point six million dollars. Had to ask Dave. Get a deal. Get a deal.
So about a month ago, September 18th, KDOT received bids for the South Orange Trafficway, $129,806 plus or minus $1,000. And they also received bids for our 31st Street project for $3.9 million. What I've got up here right now is basically the whole layout of the SLT, so you can kind of see what's going on in relation to our little project, which is just right here, the construction of 31st Street from Haskell to O'Connell. And I'm going to zoom in closer just on our part of the project. Well, let's start with what we're building. Essentially, what we're building is a two-lane road between, on 31st Street from Haskell to O'Connell, and basically connect those two north-south streets. And there'll be 12-foot lanes. We're not going with the curb and gutter section. We're trying to be more environmentally friendly. And we're going to have ditches that are basically bio swales. We're going to have landscape medians. We're going to have a recreational path, and we're going to have a sidewalk. And that's going to be throughout that whole alignment.
When you said two-lane, you mean two-lane in each direction?
One lane in each direction.
One lane in each direction.
One lane in each direction.
Do we originally have it as two-lanes?
Not on 31st Street, no.
I guess it was just super wide because of all of the paths we have.
It's wide because, and you've also got the shoulder.
Yeah.
It's a 12-foot lane and an eight-foot shoulder.
Okay. It's been so long since we did that, I just thought for sure it was, it's like a parkway.
It is like a parkway. And one of the other comments is that there's not any access points.
There's no access points.
Between Haskell and O'Connell. So I think the ability for traffic to move on that well is going to be facilitated.
Yeah.
Also, you're going to, what K-10 has done, you're going to take a lot of traffic off
of 31st Street that uses that as a de facto east-west route to wrap back down on Haskell. So, you know, you're going to, I think you're going to have a lot less traffic on that 31st Street.
The section that KDOT's building, 31st Street, we're going back to the SLT plans from Haskell all the way back over to Louisiana and tying in, that is a two-lane section.
That's two-lane, two each direction?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. I just, I want to make sure, I remember seeing these cross-sections and I thought, so there's a shared use path and a sidewalk. Excellent.
Shared use path is how wide?
10 foot. 10 foot. And that will connect, let's go back to the SLT.
Think 10 foot a lot.
It will connect here.
Longer, Dave, not wider.
Here at Haskell and with the KDOT project, there will be a 10-foot path along Haskell that will cross and connect to their, basically their multi-use path that runs all the way along the K-10, come back to Iowa, that's not Iowa, Louisiana, relocated Louisiana, and you'll be able to cross back over and then pick up the existing shared use path that runs, you know, from Iowa back to the.
How are they going to get the shared use paths from the theater area? Does it go over on the bridge? It goes on the bridge over Iowa Street?
Well, I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look at the plans, where that is. It's not going to go over the bridge. It comes over to Iowa and then we're going to have to find out how we'll get people across there.
Through the traffic signal.
Yeah.
At grade, traffic signal.
Yeah.
Aren't we, want to widen another bridge? Maybe not tonight.
So our 31st Street project, basically from Haskell to O'Connell, and we've got to, I guess, give KDOT some kudos for this. Our project was about a six and a half to seven million dollar project from Haskell to O'Connell, which would have included some work here at the intersection of 31st and Haskell and the roundabout here at O'Connell. KDOT is essentially building from Haskell about to here, which is where the old LRM, Artie Johnson owned it recently, construction site, and then this is the Harrison property as well. KDOT has, is rebuilding this section, not quite a half, but considerable amount because they had to provide access to all these businesses and stuff. So they were, they put this in the SLT plans with some of the mitigation that they had to do. They had to acquire this whole tract here, this whole 40 acres here that they're going to give back to the city, but they acquired it. So essentially, we're building about a little more than half the road and we didn't have to buy any right-of-way except for from here over to, you know, from Harrison Family Farms over to O'Connell. So KDOT picked up the tab for the rest with their project. So our cost essentially is the cost that Emory Sap bid for our section only of the project, $3.9 million. We do have some right-of-way costs that we had to pick up, which is on the east side of the project. The Burghrass property, the Thompson property, and the Garber property. We acquired both the Burghrass and the Garber property, the Thompson property, a significant portion was taken out. But KDOT did all the negotiations, all the appraisals, all the acquisitions, and then they will dedicate it back to us after the project's done. Wetland mitigation, with our 31st Street project, there is some wetlands that were identified, about 10 acres that we had to mitigate for, and KDOT overbought essentially what they needed to meet their obligations. They couldn't buy portions or parts of tracts. They had to buy, condemn the whole thing when they wanted to buy them. So they essentially said, well, they agreed to providing the city some of that leftover. They have extra, so basically we need about 11 acres, and they're providing that to us. And there's a cost to that, about $71,000 that we'll have to pay them back. And then Baker, another agreement that you'll see here that we're working on, Baker has agreed to construct, monitor, maintain, and do all of our reporting back to the core for the next three years for $61,000. And then we do have to do the inspection and testing, though, for our portion of 31st Street. So that's how we came to the total cost of $4.75 million. We did receive about $800,000 back in 2006 for an earmark. We have about $250,000 of that left. So the difference is the amount of the bond that we're asking the commission to approve, $4.6 million. We will owe KDOT $2 million January 1st of '14 and then another $2 million January 1st of '15. And then that's basically for the construction part. All the other pieces, when, I'm assuming toward the end of the project, they'll have a reconciliation and they'll ask us for, you know, the property acquisition and the wetland costs and stuff like that. Oh, a couple of other things I wanted to mention. There will be a public meeting sometime the first week of November. They're putting it together. They're going to discuss the SLT project, the K-10 and Bob Billings interchange, and the signalization of West Sixth Street and K-10, that interchange. And then include it all into one, and they're going to have a public meeting here in Lawrence and answer anybody's questions.
Pretty good.
Other questions?
Chuck, so it shows the map here on 31st Street, it shows it going to O'Connell and then extending onto the east. I presume it stops at O'Connell.
Yeah, we'll just have a little tie-in to get that straightened out onto the county road. The little extension that you see there, the county, when we did our 31st Street, the county piggybacked on our study, and they've got a study to run basically 31st Street all the way out to Noria Road. It's a different alignment. It pretty much follows that. I cut that off of these pictures because I didn't want to confuse anybody, but we are stopping at O'Connell, yes.
The road work is stopping at O'Connell.
Correct.
But then there is interest from the county to take it onto the east at some point in time?
I think it was just more of a planning document.
I don't think there's funding interest from the county to do that. There was some concerns from some of those property owners about what 31st Street would look like once it was ever built. And that, so the design work, or not the design work, but really more the concept work.
The concept work.
Has been, a concept report has been prepared. It has, it's an interesting feature, east of O'Connell, there's a new 31st Street and there's kind of a frontage road.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term.
31st Street goes to the north and the existing road stays as the frontage road because the local residents didn't want to have all the traffic so close to their homes.
So we'll have to see how that develops, if it does develop. Once there's urbanization out there, there's some sanitary sewer work that's been done by the county about four or five years ago. At some point, there may be urbanization demands out there to annex into the city and start building roads to city standards and such, but we really haven't seen much activity east of O'Connell. A little bit this year, Scott, but not, I don't know if anybody's pulling building permits east of O'Connell. So we'll have to see what happens there. Did you ever find out about signalization at 31st and Haskell? Or what kind of traffic control?
Let me flip back to, there is a signal there.
Traffic signal at 31st and?
Haskell.
And Haskell.
At the intersection here, 31st and Haskell, there is a signal here. There is, it's, Haskell will be the through lane. It'll be stop right here. I mean, this is at 29th. This is a little earlier configuration. We sat down with the industries here, this is, I'm pointing to my screen, you guys can't see that. The configuration in this area right here is a little bit different once we met with all the property owners in KDOT, but this is an earlier version of the layout, so. But the traffic signal will be here at 31st and Haskell.
Right.
And we're having our pre-construction meeting next Monday, so we'll have a better idea of the schedule, but I know they want to get started sooner rather than later.
Okay. Any other questions for Chuck? Thank you. Public comment? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
Just one quick comment. It seems like, I think, you know, talked about this, what, about 2006, Dave? Somewhere right in there.
Yeah, yeah. Who was on the commissioner?
I think we found out about the earmark in 2005.
701. This has been a little ways coming, but I think the weight has really been worth it. It's something that, you know, I always envisioned of this parkway kind of roadway that would be able to enhance the, you know, the neighborhoods to the south and to the east, and I think it does exactly that. I think the comments a second ago about adding additional relief to the roadway network in the southeast area and 31st Street as it goes to the west, I think is something that we're going to see, you know, happen over time. But I think just that additional safety element that this roadway is going to provide to the areas out southeast would be incredible. It was like a long time since we were at the facility out. And you had to cover all those snake cages up for me, but.
I know, Chuck, you don't like snakes.
I found out.
Prairie Park Nature Center?
That was, that's the place.
Yes.
I drive by in the way.
Mike Amick Memorial Snake Cave. Remember that one?
A Kodak moment.
You guys have any concerns or questions about moving forward with this?
No, I think it was, it looks like a good project.
Okay. Well, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7047.
Second?
Motion to approve Resolution.
And authorize the mayor.
To sign. Yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Authorize the mayor to sign the authority to award contract to Emory Sappenson Inc.
Okay, so there's a motion by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Riordan still. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 4-0. Very good. Thank you. Public comment of a gentle nature?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Welsh. I just wanted to let you know that the pitch, the music and cultural meg that comes out of Kansas City every year does a best of issue, and they ask all their readers for the best of all these things in the area. And the best day trip in the whole Kansas City area is to Lawrence, according to their readers, so.
Good.
There you go.
It's good to know. Thank you. Where do we get to go? They took our spot, huh?
We get to the horrible.
There you go.
We have to stay home.
Had a nice trip to Shenute. It's only an hour and a half away. It was a nice little trip, and if anyone wants to take one, it's not too far. Any other public comment? Okay. Future agenda items?
You see the memo there? We get to miscellaneous and commission items. We have been able to schedule a meeting with the chief of the Delaware Tribe in Bartlesville. Mayor Dever and Commissioner Farmer are going to be in attendance. It's my understanding that Commissioner Thillman and Craig Weinog are going to go. I think I'm driving, and the mayor's going to meet us, because we've got a previous engagement there in Bartlesville, scheduled for Tuesday morning at 11:00 a.m. One of our challenges in then is if we stay there, go to lunch, we may not, it looks like it's a good three-hour drive from Bartlesville. So I think we may want to reschedule our rental registration study session just to make sure we've got enough time, if we have lengthy discussions or a lengthier trip to another Tuesday. At least that's my observation. And then we might also want to just talk generally about that plan conference in Bartlesville. When we look at calendars, we don't do the 22nd, you do not have a meeting on the 29th. I'm not suggesting that date. But what I would suggest is November the 5th, which is another Tuesday.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me. It's fine with me. That's easy.
When Commissioner Farmer is vocal, I'll confirm that. I think that usually works for him, so we'll try and do that again then, 4 o'clock on November the 5th. And then we are going to meet with the Delaware Tribe representatives then on October 22nd, a week from today.
Mayor, just one question.
Yes, sir.
Is there an agenda for the meeting that everybody's going to attend and what kind of questions?
Yeah. You know, I think we should probably put together a, an outline of what we'd like to talk about, an agenda, maybe would be good. I think if you have any items that you'd like answered or questions you'd like answered, then we could certainly ask those questions and put them on a list so we can deliver them ahead of time, so they might be prepared to answer those questions for us.
Obviously, the question, you know, whether or not an application for land interest for gaming purposes is something that we've heard quite a bit about, you know, speculation. I think, you know, those kind of discussions, you know, I would appreciate, you know, finding out whether or not at this point that can be answered.
Okay.
Or what those potential uses, you know, might be for that property. And come back, report, and we have discussions either as our body or with the county commission, whoever we need to have, but rely on you and the others to find out answers to those questions.
Any other questions?
Well, I think, Mike, the one I'm interested in, if there's other sites that are available for what their endeavor is rather than the site that they're dealing with because of the environmental concerns, I think you more or less asked this similarly.
Okay, so we'll put together an agenda and.
You know, and Mayor, that's the only word I can think about.
Sure.
I'm sure it's going to be just free-flowing conversation, but, you know, agenda of questions, you know.
Yeah. Questions and answers. Session is the way I look at it because it's there, you know, we're going there in order to explore what they're planning for the area, for the community. Anyone comes to our community, we'd like to know how they're going to invest.
Well, and I think, you know, it goes without saying, you know, we look forward to, you know, the Delaware Tribe wanting to become part of the, you know, Lawrence community. And, you know, that we'll be involved any way we can. But, you know, at the same time, you know, that we have to answer questions. But, you know, at the same time, you know, that we have to answer questions about all kinds of things, and, you know, obviously one is whether or not, you know, that whatever it may be is appropriate at that site, so, you know, see what we got.
Yep. Future agenda items, I guess we got that squared away?
I believe so.
All right. Next is commission items. I have one thing, I was asked to let everyone know that there's a 5K this Sunday at 10:00 a.m. It's Hunger Run, and it's to raise money for the Children's Hunger Fund, and it's, you can read more about it at irunforhunger.com, that's all one word, and it starts at South Park on Sunday at 10:00 a.m., so you can register there or online tonight. That's all I have to add. Anybody else?
No.
All right.
You got to wait lunch tomorrow? You have an opportunity to go?
Exhale. Cookies.
Thanks for reminding me.
You're going to be there, serving, I believe, right?
Darn, almost forgot about that.
Got a little bit.
Excellent. All right, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
By the way, I want to see how much money I left on the table.
Can't, not allowed.
Oh, yeah, it is. Public.
Oh, I guess you can.
Let's move your competitions to.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Com, Vice Mayor Amick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, um, motion passes four zero. I don't think anyone's opposed.
Commissioner Farmer gets well.
Me too. Wish Jeremy well, and I'm sure he was at home watching every minute.
I bet.